And good evening and welcome to the October 10th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We are thrilled to have so many parents and young people with us tonight to visit with us. We are glad that you've made your appearance known tonight. We welcome you at any time. We welcome those who are watching us on television perhaps and will continue to do so. Now, at this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand. We have four students tonight to lead us in our pledge. CJ Dewal, a kindergarten student from Scales Elementary. Emily Dewal, a second grade student from Scales. Along with McKenna Alexander, a second grade student from Scales. And also Gavin Cole, a second grader from Scales. And also Gina Ballou, a fifth grade student from Discovery School. Ladies and gentlemen, our pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, our moment of silence. Thank you, students. We appreciate you being here. That, I believe, is the most we've had in a long time during our pledge, but we are glad that you decided to come and be with us tonight.
Nice and loud.
Yes, sir. All of them seem to know the words and everything. That's good. All right. We have a motion, I'm pleased, to approve the agenda as printed. You have had an opportunity to look at it.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. King. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications, please.
Communications tonight. Murfreesboro City Schools would like to thank the following community partners for their support in purchasing laptop computers for the new family resource center that's going to be located at Olive Branch Church. Mackles Homes, J&amp;J Smythe Leasing, Advance Financial, and Middleton C Association of Realtors. We will be having a ribbon cutting open house for that new resource center in the upcoming weeks. The community is invited to the open house, right, I should keep on reading, at open house for the resource center on Wednesday, October 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. This is at Olive Branch Church and it is located at 1115 Minerva Drive. Gail Boyd has recently presented at the Middle Tennessee Mathematics Association Conference at UT Martin. Gail's session was Math Norms to Empower and Engage All Students. Also, recently, Kim Frank presented at the State School Counselors and Administrative Leadership Institute. In addition, she was asked by the state to present at the Tennessee South Central Core Division of Administrators. Her topic was Building Strong Brains. Kim will be interviewed in the next week for a PBS documentary as well. This is part of the state of Tennessee is putting this on, so she's doing a great job with our ACIS program. Thursday, October 12th will be our second gathering of families who are participating in the Ready for Kindergarten program. This is part of the RE plan that centers on reaching the community and families and building foundations for literacy before kindergarten. Scales Elementary School has been chosen by the state to participate in the qualitative research study that seeks to better understand how RTI-Square has affected the specific learning disability identification process and whether its implementation has led to different outcomes in determining SLD eligibility, and that is specific learning disability. RTI-Square, Response to Instruction and Intervention. Try not to use so many acronyms. Thank you to our schools for promoting the Everyday Matters Campaign and specifically to the Go USA MCS partnership. The weekend after, students were awarded our free game of golf for their month of perfect attendance. We had 48 students to redeem their free mini golf coupons. So I think they are enjoying that and we appreciate Go USA for that partnership. Murfreesboro City Schools would also like to thank Rack Room Shoes located at the Avenue for their donation of $2,369 in gift card for the purchases of shoes for our students that are in need. And that is your communications.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Next item on the agenda is consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent item?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any other, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right.
Your first action item is board policies, and I'm going to turn this part over to Mr. Anderson for, well, actually, this one goes to Ms. Baker and then goes to Mr. Anderson. As far as political activities, the 5.606.
Okay. We discussed this policy last time. Do y'all have any questions? The revisions were made, you requested.
No. I'll make a motion we approve.
Motion by Mr. Barrett to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay, now, I'm first reading, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, first reading. Board members, we have Policy 2.100, Fiscal Management Goals. This is a new policy, as you know, with getting the TSBA to review the policies. We are now going with a numeric system to match up with other districts in the state as far as the, as far as the indicator fees, descriptor codes. And this one is new, and basically what it says is how fiscal management goals will be established and what the board and the system will do to maintain fiscal management.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. King?
One quick question I have was, after reading it, Bullet Point 3, line 8. Does this, and the intent is including the use of the annual audit by CPA firm? Let me go back to it. To use available techniques for budget development and management, would that include the annual audit that we have?
Well, anytime we get our audit, we look at that to see what areas are the concentration of where the money is spent. And the techniques that are talking about is how we go about the process and what we do and what equipment we utilize to make up our budget. It's really the process that we're following.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second to approve.
Moved to approve.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Mr. King, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
All right, this next policy, 2.200, is going to rescind fiscal management policy number two. And it's basically, again, talking about the preparation procedures about the budget, the hearings and reviews, and the adoption procedure. This is what we've been doing all along. It just puts it into writing based on what the TSBA has put together for other districts around the state. It just describes our process and the adoption of the procedures and when we get out the information, when we pass the budget, when we get the information to you about the budget timeline, and that's just laid out in this policy.
Okay. Mr. Ballard?
This is not particular to this policy, but kind of as I read through all of these, I see that, and maybe this is for Ms. Baker, I see that each one of these says we review annually. Now, is that a, is that a legislated or is that a mandated? Or is that our selection, whether we review annually or semi, or, you know, every two years? Unless something, unless nothing is changing or impacting the policy, do we have to do it every year?
It depends on how you interpret the statute. TSBA has interpreted the statute that it has to be done annually. However, some other attorneys, including myself, interpret it to mean if there are changes in the law. So TSBA is recommending we review them annually.
But that would not necessarily mean the extensive process that you're going through now. The reason that we're going through this now is they really need updating. So it might be that we would bring a whole group to you and basically just point out to you what the differences would be that we made in them, and that would take care of it.
Yeah, yeah, something like that is, seems like, I mean, obviously, we've got a lot of these to do and we're spending a lot of time going through these and plotting through them, and a lot of it's just mundane repeat of what we've already got on the books. So if there was a way to streamline that, I don't think I'd find any objections up here. But anyway, something to, as you said, Linda, maybe pull them all together and say, okay, here's the exceptions.
Right. And I think after we get through all of these, that's exactly what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
I was comparing this policy to our old policy, and one thing I noted, in the old policy, we had a section that stated the budget would be available for inspection by interested citizens and interest groups in the Office of Director's Schools. Is that a state requirement or is that just something the previous board put in there? It sounds like something the previous board maybe put in there, previous board members.
Just part of the practice of operations today is to make it available to the public so there's no one questioning the fiscal responsibility piece. You know, it's available. It's public domain.
And I figured that, and I just didn't know if we need, I don't think we need to spell it out in policy, but I just noted that. And then another thing, line 18, I see the January 1st, and it sounds like we already do that, the development of the calendar, right?
I pretty much get the calendar to you in November because we're already into our budget preparation in January.
Yeah, you have to be.
So I give it to you, give it to you then, in November.
Okay. And then line 26 of our new policy, May, it just says May for the month, but no date listed, and I've always heard May 1st for getting our budget to the city manager's office.
It is, it is May 1st, but they have been known to give us extra time if it's a weekend or something like that, so they said by May.
So I'll just leave it, and I'm fine with leaving it at May, so.
Okay, those are my questions.
I had the same question. Mr. King?
Line 27, this is the, I'll call it my point as all these policies. Line 27, 10 days, do we need to spell out business days or calendar days?
My bet is that's just the way that it's listed in the, in the Tennessee Journal. Let me read, Tennessee Internal School Uniform Accounting Policy Manual. You know, yeah, no, say that a few times. But I would think that that's probably, since that's, well, actually, that's coming from TCA. My bet is that's the way TCA has it listed.
Okay.
Typically, we look at to get it to them by the 10th is what we look at, so it's calendar days, but I'm pretty sure they're not going to fuss if we do it on workdays.
Okay.
Any other questions? Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
All right, the next policy is 2.201. This is a new policy, and it, all it does is describe what we already do about getting, when we come and bring to you updates in the policy and we say it's a housekeeping, et cetera, that's, this basically describes what that is.
For some reason, my computer is running very slow all of a sudden. There it is, 2.1, okay. Have any questions on this policy?
No.
Have a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
The next policy is 2.400. It's going to rescind fiscal management III policy, and this one's all about revenues. I do need to make a correction on line 19. When I reviewed these, I missed this particular one. It says, extended school program, the extended school fund shall be collected at the individual schools and received and deposited in the ESP bank account, not school bank account. ESP has its own bank account, it's its own standalone ESP. The next sentence was where it says, the principal shall report to collections and pay the board by school check. That, I need to just get rid of that. That is from an antique way of the way we used to do things, and it's no more, and I missed, I'm sorry, I missed that when I reviewed these. So I'd like to change the word "school" in line 19 to ESP bank account or extended school program and delete this final sentence, the principal shall report to collections. The principal is not involved at all with the collections of ESP funds.
Just one question. I noticed this policy was, the new policy is quite larger compared to our old policy. Is there just some major differences between our old policy or is it just spelling it out more efficiently or more state statutes?
The way TSBA describes it is this one deals specifically with revenues, and ours isn't really just geared towards revenues, and this hasn't, talks about grants and how we handle that rental income, so it's really an expansion of the opportunities we have to get revenues.
Thank you.
Mr. King?
I just, it's not a question about the policy per se, but it is. As you read it, I notice it talks about fees, we won't charge children for fees, but we can levy a fine. What happens if, and the parents and guardians, custodians of the children are responsible for the fine? What happens if the family of the student don't pay the fine? Are there consequences? Can they not, will we not allow them to enroll? Or is there, or has it even gotten that far in the past?
Well, the state allows you to collect fines. In the past, the board has taken a position that depends on what it is and what situation is.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
We pay the vendor the tax, right, on items that we purchase?
Yes and no. I know it sounds political. We don't pay tax at all as a school system, but if a school is buying t-shirts to resell, then there is tax, and the tax is collected on the value of the shirt as it was sold to us to resell. But that's the only time we really have taxes involved is on that.
So if we buy the shirt for $5, we pay tax on $5. If we sell it for $6, we don't charge more?
You don't charge tax to the customer because it's already built in. Now, if we buy the shirts as part of a field trip where the school itself is doing as part of a dress for it, then there's no tax. But if it's a resellable item that they're selling to the parents, then it is taxed.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on this policy, 2.4? Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Barrett, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay, the next policy is 2.401. It rescinds Board Operations Policy 28, and this one just lays out the guidelines for accepting gifts and donations. And basically, it's, when someone makes a donation to the school or a gift, it becomes the property of the school unless it's decided otherwise in writing. Again, this is something that we've been doing all along, but it describes it in detail.
Mr. Barrett?
I know in our old policy, line 7 and 8 of it, they had this, the fact that an individual or a group has given a certain gift to one school does not preclude the purchase of such equipment, supplies, or services for other schools by the board. And I know that always comes up, one school might have an active PTO and they're getting gifts or they're getting more things, you know, and we always want to strive to try to get what we can for our, for our schools. We, I thought maybe we want to put this in our policy just to reflect that, but it's up to, it's up to the board.
That's an age-old question amongst all school districts, is you'll have some school that will have a PTO that can raise X amount of dollars and another school that can't raise as much. And the debate and argument always comes, is do you restrict the ones that are wanting to give it, give the extra money, or do you say no because others can't have it? And so it's wherever the board comes down on that, that decision. We have not restricted gifts from any school that won, anyone who wanted to give the school district a gift, though we've never taken it. And we don't have to put it in there.
I don't know that we need to restrict it.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't read it that way, but if Gary read it that way, then I don't want to restrict anybody.
If I buy a piece of equipment, Mr. Shackleton is a classroom teacher, and I buy that piece of equipment and I give to Mr. Shackleton, now he's going to be able to use that in his classroom. But Mr. Shackleton, if he moves from the school he was presently to, to another school, can he take that piece of equipment with him to the other school?
Linda, you want to answer this one? You want me to?
No, go ahead, Gary.
All right. The gift that you're giving, if it was given to the individual person as a personal gift to be used for them in a class, then it's, then it's a gift to them and not to the school. If you're giving it to the school, then it's the school property and the school would make that determination. Where issues we have is when grants are received, we have, we have to get some determination. If that grant was given and the teacher's a second grade level and they got a grant for a second grade, now the teacher moves to sixth grade, is that appropriate for sixth grade? And chances are, it's not appropriate. So that's another little nuance to this, this particular thing, but very rarely have I seen anyone give a gift to a specific teacher for a specific, for their class unless it's a parent saying, hey, I want, I want you to have this to teach the kids with. But even then, it becomes a property of the school unless it's a personal, person-to-person gift to the, to the teacher.
Okay. Other questions? Do I have a motion to approve Policy 2.401, Gifts and Others?
I'll make a motion we approve as written.
Okay.
As presented.
All right, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is 2.402. It's Investment Earnings. This one used to have a lot more interest because when people would have money, they would put it in, the schools would put it into a savings account or a CD, certificate of deposit, and they could get a higher interest rate. Right now, the interest rates are so low, and we make the schools follow the rule that you should be spending the money on the students that earned the money or brought the money in and raised it for the school. And so we only have two schools right now that have investment earnings in a bank account, and it's really not that much money. But this lays out that they can do that and put it into a bank account, and that the funds for food service and extended school program are, can be treated the same way. The money stays where it was. If it was food service, bank account stays there. ESP, it stays there. At the school, it stays there. In other words, it's not where the central office would take the funds and take the accounts away. It stays where it was.
Okay. Any questions? Have a motion to approve 2.4, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Mr. Ballard.
Mr. Anderson, if they, if the schools decide that they are going to make an investment account with monies, how does that, does that become a federal or state tax issue?
No, because the schools aren't taxable either, so that, we don't pay taxes.
Anyway, so if they go to an investment fund, say they've got $20,000 and they want to put it in there, and suddenly, you know, there's documentation of that, 1099s or whatever forms that go in there, that, you know, then at the end of the year, they're going to get an earnings statement on that. How does that, or is that, we're completely voided that?
School districts are not taxable entities, and also, they cannot invest in any, any kind of risky thing. It's got to be like a fixed CDs to go or the bank or savings account. They cannot put in anything else.
Okay. All right. Yeah, thank you.
Have a motion to approve 2.402?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. King. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay, next one is 2.403, Surplus Property Sales. This rescinds fiscal management 11. What this one does is says if we have some property that we're not using anymore, its value is less than $250. This is the process we're already following through it. It puts it in writing. One thing it has added to this one is a disposition of equipment purchased with federal dollars, and it just gives the federal guidelines of how we can, how we can dispose of that property. So it's like when we would have an auction on some stuff. We've done auctions since I've been here twice, oh, three times, counting computers too. So this just lays out how surplus property is, is sold and gotten rid of when it's no longer useful by the school system.
Any questions, Mr. Barrett?
I had a few. Line 1, do we, do we need to add or designate after director? I don't see that. And then the other question on line 1 was, I don't think I've ever, have we ever done that? I mean, you just said we do it like three times for the auction, see a list of unusable items that we need to approve of?
Yeah, well, here, here, anything we've ever gotten rid of has a value of less than $250, so the approval only has to be the director and the board chair. It's like if we're going to sell a bus that has a, you know, $5,000 thing, then the, then the school board would have to sign off on that.
Okay, because I was like, I've been here five years and I've never seen a, you know, I was like, when I was reading that, I was like, I'm not.
Return our buses into use.
Exactly, and I appreciate that, so, and I'm sure our district appreciates that too, so.
But really, we've always, we've kept things till we can't use them anymore.
Till the wheels fall off?
Yeah.
Okay. And then lines 3 and 4, and maybe, maybe we've already answered this one too. I know we dispose of our excess property online rather than the paper, and I see in our old policy, we actually spelled out that it was online. Do we need to spell it out here? I don't think so. You know, that's implied.
We do it already online, and we, you can if you want. We're going to do it anyhow.
I know you have stuff to advertise in the paper, right, Kelly? If it's, if you're selling it, like public notice that you're doing an auction?
Yes, they're, they may have changed it where you can, just advertise with the internet.
Okay.
Okay, there's a debate going on right now in the state. Other districts are trying to get rid of the seven-day window because sometimes they're selling items and the advertisement costs more than the item they're selling. TSBA is taking that to the convention to try to get rid of that particular issue.
Okay. All right. And then our old, and I got one more, I think it's my last one. So our old policy had the revenue generated from the sale of surplus property going in our general fund, and I didn't see that in the new one. Does it go in the general fund if we sell excess property? I assume it does.
Yes, because all property is, is a district's property, and it does go into the general fund for, general purpose fund.
Okay. And then, any revenue, then lines 22 and 23, okay, that's what it said. Any revenue derived from, and that's from the old policy. Okay. Those were my questions.
Okay. Mr. King?
My question was very similar to the newspaper advertising. I would just like to assume we're taking, in addition to doing that, we're taking advantage of every available means at our disposal to help generate sales. Sounds like we are.
There is no requirements or limitations on who can bid for these items. Am I correct?
I'm sorry.
There's no limitation or requirement on who can bid on any items that we have, like if we're going to put up for auction surplus?
I don't believe, Kelly, is there any federal or state law on that one?
Maybe. I would have to pull that. I, I would have to double-check the statute. I know there are some situations in city property that I've dealt with that's been, that gets sold to the public, and anyone involved in confiscating the item or placing it up for sale cannot bid on it. I know that's part of, that, that deals specifically with items confiscated by police, that, those type of issues. So I'd have to see if they have any similar restrictions in school systems. I don't know.
I can't see that we would restrict teachers or employees from bidding on an item if they're open bids. Would that be assumption correct?
I would assume that's correct, but I'd have to double-check.
All right. All right, any other questions on surplus property sales policy? Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Thank you, Mr. Settles. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay, next policy is 2.404, school support organizations. If you remember a few years back, Kelly went and wrote BO 39 and did a very extensive description of this particular, it was required, the state required that we have a policy on this. This particular policy is a shorter version, and what was included in, in this one was operation of a school bookstore where it allows a PTO or other school support organization to run a bookstore. As long as 100% of the, of the profits go back to the school, and talks about concessions and parking. There are some things in what Kelly had written that we would give to the school support organization itself, but this is the, it's a reduced version of that very detailed policy previously.
All right, line 34, where we designated a date prior to the beginning of regular school year. Is there any special date, or is that just prior to the school year? No calendar date has to be set or done, right?
Okay, all right.
Okay.
I have one question while you're looking.
Okay.
Lines 10 and 11 of our new policy, it states the records will be available for inspection. And I'm assuming this will be at central office, if it's, if it is, and I'd like to just put it right there at, for inspection at central office, so people know where to look for it if they're reading our policy.
We always call the stuff into the central office so we can control who's coming in, et cetera. Kelly, is there anything different in that? Because my understanding was that was the state law that it, it had to be open for inspection. And we would want to be involved with that.
Yes, I mean, they're all public records, so the documents would be available for inspection. We would have to gather them wherever they're located.
Oh, okay.
Someone requests.
School support organization, I'm assuming that's the parent organization?
Typically, it's a PTO. It could be a booster club for sports or something like that, as long as it's gotten the approval of the director of schools to have an, an extra one. But we only have one per school, which is the PTO or the PTA.
Are their fundraisers, are they considered as part of the number that the school can have? Or that above and beyond?
That, well, there's, there's a certain number that the school can have, and we think it's two from the school and two from the PTO. Not counting the pictures. Is that correct?
But they can have, but they can have more as long as we approve it.
If it's, yeah, they can have additional ones if they're pre-approved by the, but I think, I think the way it was written was two by the school and two by the support organization. And sometimes they tend to blend them together. It might be three in one or like that. But as long as it's approved by the director, they could have additional ones if it's a unique opportunity to raise additional funds.
But that, the schools are, you don't count the bookstore, you don't count school pictures as fundraising activities? Am I correct?
No, you're right, we don't. And we also have the, the distinction between an active or a passive fundraiser. They can have as many passive fundraisers as they want. And what that is, if it takes no instructional time, they could have like Kroger will give you so much money for how many things they buy, or you might go to a pizza store, they say, we're going to give you 10% of the sales. As long as they don't take any instructional time to do that, they can have as many of those as they want. It's, the, the big key is to, is to keep the fundraising out of the instructional day as much as we can.
All right. Any other questions? Have a mo, I'm sorry, Mr. King?
Just now, the, the policy spells out that, that the organization has to spend the money in line with the goals and objectives that we give them. Do we also request that they spend all their money? Or is it good that they keep some money and move it to the next year for the next organization, at least have a little something? Or, or is that something kind of out of our realm of how much they spend?
Well, that's a great question, because the, the school itself, the school funds, they have to keep no more than 20, 25% to carry over. It's kind of like, and the reason for that is, is when the teachers come in and they start, they want money to buy stuff to get their school started before the board allocations come to them. Now, the school support organization, they typically go from year to year with the money, but they can have carryover too. Because a lot of times they'll be working on, say they want to buy a, a computer cart with 20 computers and a cart itself, and it may cost them $20,000 and they raise 15, then they would want to save it for the next, for the next year. We look at, and the auditor looks at reasonable. If it's a reasonable thing, it's like, well, you can't keep building 5,000, 5,000, 5,000 to come. But it's got to be something you can get pretty much taken care of very next year.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve school support organization's policy 2.404?
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I hear none. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I think we switch over to Mr. Ringstaff.
Thank you. Our first policy on first reading is 5.203, recommendations in file transfers. What this is, is a school employee cannot help anyone, an agent, contractor, or another school employee to get a new job who has, we have reason to believe has been involved in sexual misconduct of a student or a minor, unless the lines through five through 18 have been followed. It's, this is really a no-brainer. We recommend approval for first reading.
Have any questions, Mr. Barrett?
Just line 17, it says, you know, with all these wonderful policies, the director of schools, do we need to put down designate as well there, or, I'm assuming?
I'm going to find a lot of these designees if we.
Find all these designees, yeah.
I'm telling you.
I think that one has to be.
It has to be, yeah, and I don't, yeah, that's why I was asked, that's why I was asking.
It's developing the historic procedures.
We can leave it.
Director will have approval. Any other questions?
All right.
Mr. Settles?
I, I'm a little confused on the, the policy, I'll admit. District employees are prohibited from assisting a school employee, contractor, or agent in obtaining a new job. That doesn't mean a job with the district. Is that talking about getting a job? Because it, what it's.
Correct. Mr. Settles, we may have suspected someone of this, and they could be suspended.
Okay.
Suspension. While on suspension, no one in the school system should help that employee get another job.
We can't send them a letter of recommendation, in other words?
Exactly.
Okay.
Now, that, that is if they have been involved in sexual misconduct. Is that correct?
Correct.
Otherwise, you can.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Or even has a probable cause to believe.
True. And if you have probable cause to believe, they would be.
I guess that's where I'm getting sticky. Cafeteria worker, I suspect, I've got probable cause. I haven't initiated anything, nothing's been done, but I personally, so I guess that's where I'm getting a little.
You would report it to, you would report it to the.
After I report, and then.
And then we, we'd go from there. If they, yes, we get involved, the authorities, do an investigation, suspension.
Okay.
And board members would be considered as district employees?
Yes, sir.
Am I correct?
So we all have to behave.
Do we have a motion to approve policy 5.203, recommendations in file transfers?
So moved, no.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Second by left, Mr. Barrett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next policy for first reading is personal health examinations, communicable diseases, 5.400. This is upon hire, the employees should present a certificate showing a satisfactory health record. And then we depend on employees informing us if they have a contagious or communicable disease. They are either put on suspension or loc, transferred to a physician that may not, that would not endanger the health of schoolchildren. And we could require physical examination by a physician whenever there is a reason to believe that the employee has any communicable disease. Director of schools shall reassign or suspend any employee who's suspected of having such. And we may need to get the county health office involved. We recommend approval on first reading.
Are we obligated to pay for the physical examination, or is that the employee's responsibility?
Good question, Mr. Campbell.
I think if we mandate it, then we have to pay for it.
Okay. Do, do we need to state that, or do we just assume that as such?
We can add it.
Yeah, we, let me, let me double check the statute because I thought it was addressed in our prior policy.
Okay. All right, Mr. King?
For some reason, I think this got brought up a little bit in the past. So we, we, we want teachers, if they have a communicable disease, you know, we don't want them in the classroom. Do, do we provide training at least once a year on what we mean by that? I think we've discussed this. And we also, you know, I'd like to, I hope we teach teachers on what to look for. You know, do, do we want them to stay home for the chickenpox? I would assume we do. But what about the flu? I assume so too. You know, do we teach them, hey, here are the things that we, we mean by a communicable disease? On the flip side, is there a policy that will come across down the road? What if a student has the, has a communicable disease? What is the policy for the student? So.
I think the policy is coming on down the road.
Okay.
Right, and it, this is all based on state law. There's a state law that if, if a teach, an employee or a student in the school system have a communicable disease, and you have to look at the Department of Health's definition of that. It's not as simple as the flu.
Yeah.
It's something more like tuberculosis or.
Yes, but be honest with you, if I had tuberculosis, I wouldn't know. I, I don't know what to look for. That makes any sense. I guess now, I guess people may Google it. You know, I've got this, this, and this.
It's tied into the Department of Health regulations where they can require someone to be quarantined, those type, type of diseases.
Mr. Ballard?
On line five, there it says the board shall require any employee to submit to physical examination. Is it, is it the board that would require that, or is it a meeting supervisors that would require?
The director of schools, I mean.
In a lot of the policies where it's talking about the, the board, basically you all are, it, it is not meaning necessarily the board per se.
Symbolically, yeah.
In my role as an agent of the board, then that's where that comes in. Just like earlier, it talked about the board sending out thank you notes. Well, that, that becomes, I'm acting, or just like the letter, you know, it's, my, I'm acting for you.
Okay. I, I can understand that. I just thinking in terms of, as a supervisor reading that, I would hope to have the authority to go ahead and, and implore that, or require that employee to go have that examination.
And I assume that with the footnote comes directly from Tennessee code?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Barrett?
The old policy that this one's rescinding had a whole section about bus, bus drivers. And I didn't see that in our new policy. Is that going to be addressed later in the new policy that TSBA is recommending? Or do we need to put that back in here? I mean, given all the tragedy that happened in Chattanooga a couple of years ago.
We still have one board policy in the section five that we are working on that deals with.
With bus drivers, because, you know, they say if you're convicted of driving a bus while you're drunk and, you know, all that stuff, yearly physicals, all that, okay. So we are going to address it. Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve policy 5.4, personal health examinations and communicable diseases?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you. The next board policy up for first reading is employ use of electronic social media, 5.6101. Together as a team, school board, central office personnel, school administrators, we all together. Lisa Trail spent about six to eight months on this policy, PER 46. We spent so much time on it, we liked it, it applies to us, that we basically use PER 46 as board policy 5.6101. And we recommend approval for first reading. This, this applies to us as an elementary school district.
Line 30, confidentiality of health or personnel, or should that be health or personnel?
Personal. 5.6.
I think personnel in this situation.
Okay.
Yes.
I had something else, hold on. Look at line 40 and 41. With permission from the director of schools, a parent or guardian, a faculty member may communicate only with students. Explain that.
We don't think it is appropriate for our teachers, any employees of merciful C schools to communicate with elementary school children instead of the parents. So, but there is an exception to that, as you see, with written permission. And then, and also the next sentence, the school principal or designate must be included in that communication. It's just a safeguard for our employees.
I guess the part I don't comprehend is when it says via email only with students. A faculty member may communicate by email only with students.
Yeah.
If they have permission.
Email only. And how schools, coaches can text students, athletes? Practice has been changed from three o'clock to four o'clock. We're saying email only, not a text.
Only email, no text messages?
Yes, sir.
I understand now, thank you.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. I didn't.
But with approval.
But with, with approval, and the principal must be included with, and you get a copy of the email?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I, I have a question, I'm sorry.
So I'm Mr. Settles?
I'm trying to imagine a situation in which this would be necessary for our group of students. That are, that, and maybe you can present one, and I'll understand it better. That a teacher would need to communicate with a student only without his parents via email or any other means, since we're talking about sixth grade and under.
Mr. Settles?
I'm just wondering.
I can't think of one.
Because if I can't think of one, I don't know why they would need to, so I don't know why we need to put it in here.
All right, I'm, I may be able to.
I'm a little bit, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a nephew. He's a student, I'm a teacher. That gives me the opportunity, if I want to email with him, I can.
And my question was, why would you? That, and that's just the question.
My nephew.
Well, and that's covered in line.
But if he's your nephew and your.
That's covered in another sentence.
Thing.
Line 42, 43, the last sentence of that section. An employee is not subject to these provisions to the extent the employee has a social or family relationship with the student's parent.
I remember there. I remember that. I remember talking about this one. And she's not here, she probably would have weighed in. Teachers and students are emailing each other all the time about homework. And that's what, and I remember her saying that specifically, so she wanted to make sure this was getting into the policy. And I think that's where this came from.
And I guess, and I understand that, and I guess my, my, my question would be, why would I not want the parent involved even if I'm emailing them about homework? That's from a, a grandparent's standpoint.
From a male's.
Because if it's just about homework, then how come I can't be CC'd on it? And that's just.
Sometimes the students were initiating, and see, that's why, and that's why we put it in here like this. So we want to make sure it gets into our policy, so the parents get involved.
Or if, if the student initiates it to the teacher, then the teacher can reply, but they're copying in the principal. That's how I understand this, am I right? And that, I mean.
Yeah.
I think that's where this all came from.
It's just uncomfortable.
And that's covered.
I may be the only one that it's uncomfortable for, and I can accept that. But that, that's kind of.
In lines 54, 55, it talks about unsolicited contact from a student through electronic means is not a communication.
Right. I, I read that one.
But once that teacher responds, that is communication.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, since we had-
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
David.
Higher post.
Okay, the next policy for first reading, reading is tutoring for pay, 5.608. In a nutshell, if I'm a teacher, I cannot tutor one of my own students for pay. I cannot give basketball lessons in a gym for pay. I can profit as a, for, for using the school facilities or charging students. And we cannot sell and things like that. We got, no, the director's schools may, may allow enrichment and tutoring activities be offered in school facilities. Enrichment programs should be approved by the director's schools or the designee on an individual basis. But as a whole, we cannot give private lessons, piano lessons, music lessons, tutoring, things like that, for profit in our schools. No individual can.
Define teaching service?
Teaching service is if your child has trouble in math, and I'm your child's teacher, I can stay after school and work with your child for as long as you like, but I cannot charge you for my services.
Okay, but what, what would be, in reading this, I interpreted it like when it said, "For any teaching service connected with the school system." I'm assuming that is a for-profit tutoring service of which the teacher may be an employee off, but that would prohibit the teacher from tutoring one of their own in-class students. Am I correct? Do we have teaching services connected with the school system? I know that's Tennessee code, but I'm just asking the question.
Well, in ESP, we have teaching services outside the school day, and we pay the teachers at our grant schools.
But as far as, as an organization or for-profit-
We don't.
...entity coming in and tutoring, we do not. Not that I'm aware of.
No.
Okay. Mr. Settles?
I have a question. It's probably just for ease of reading. Line number one, "No employee may charge a pupil a fee for any service rendered the pupil." And I think if we just put two in there, maybe it, it would read better for me.
I'm saying-
It says rendered the pupil, line one.
Yes, sir.
"No employee may charge a pupil a fee for any service rendered the pupil on the school premises." And it just would read a little smoother if it said rendered to the pupil.
Okay.
Rendered the pupil sounds kind of like it did when I was in fourth grade, and they don't talk like that anymore.
Okay.
Well, Dr. Gilbert does, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ballard?
Or my designee.
On line four and five, you know, "No teacher should give private lessons," then how does that not get, excuse me, get intertwined? Or explain the difference between that and line 10? That may allow tutoring activities offered in the school facilities. Are those? Maybe I'm getting it caught up in my mind. You're saying, no, you can't do that, but then, but the director may have a reason to say, yes, you can?
I can think of instances. ESP would be one, for example. I, I could also think if we had a grant that's specified in the grant, that part of that grant would be tutoring, and we were paying someone from outside or, or giving a stipend to a teacher to do that specific tutoring. Just off the cuff, those are two instances I can think of.
Uh, an example, and I've got a good friend of mine who taught for years at Last Castis, and he does math tutoring on the side. But what this would prevent him from doing would be giving any of those tutoring lessons on school property, either during or after school hours. And the key words here is for pay. So, you can't charge a student and tutor that student on school property. You could do so in their home if their parents wanted to pay you for that. Am I correct? Would that be the difference? One is for pay in, on school property, where you're using school facilities and you're reaping the benefits financially as compared to if I'm tutoring him privately tutoring that child.
All right, thank you. But lines 10, understand this right? So, we are offering tutoring, and we are paying you to tutor, but you are tutoring any student that walks in?
The school system is paying that teacher, not the parent.
But not to tutor a specific pupil. It's for a first-come, first-served type of basis. And whoever walks in for those tutoring, that opportunity.
Or who we-
It just so happens that, that I'm the teacher tutoring that day. And tomorrow, maybe Mr. Ballard is doing the tutoring.
Exactly.
You know, but again, it's not aimed at a particular student society.
You're not being paid by that parent. You're being paid by the school system.
And it just, I'm tutoring whoever walks in.
Yes.
Because it's available to everyone.
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the tutoring for pay policy?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ballard, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you. Next board policy coming up for first reading is interim employees, 5.700. From time to time, we have employees take leave of absence during the school year, or state statute allows a teacher to take full year off without pay. When those occurrences happen, we hire interim teachers. And this is that policy. It's basically law. We have to have a certified teacher in there as an interim teacher. And the contract states that, I understand that if filling a temporary position, I have no expectancy, expectancy of continued employment, but may be considered for initial employment to fill other vacancies. We recommend approval on first reading.
Okay, Mr. Barrett?
Two things. Line five, designate, and then, in our old policy, we had a whole, you know, the one that this is rescinding, had a whole thing about seasonal employees. Is that covered somewhere else, or do we need to do it, or is that just outdated language?
Seasonal employees, I don't know, I-
Do we even have season, I don't think we do, do we, or?
We may, if the yard crew-
Okay.
And maintenance classified, but they would not be certified.
Okay. And maybe it's just the language. Because we, I know we call them something different, and maybe, and maybe it's just outdated language, but you might want to check that old, you know, there's a whole thing about seasonal employees, and I just caught that, and I didn't see it in our new one, so.
I would, line five, I don't know that we need to put in designate because the director of schools is the one responsible for all employees being hired.
That's fine.
Now, that would be what I would-
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
I, I see your point, though. Maybe the descriptor term for this shouldn't be interim employees. It may be interim faculty positions.
It could be an interim custodian or cafeteria or anything else.
But I think it said that the people had to be certified. Where did I get that from?
Well, just remember, we do have another classified section that, who we do hire interim employees, and that's special ed EAs. If we have a special ed EA go out on leave of absence, there are times when we do hire an interim. Normally, we hire a substitute teacher-
Okay.
-to fill that role.
Mm-hmm. I don't see anything in here that says certified.
Me neither.
I may miss it, but I don't see it.
No, because I think that's covered in something, not covered in another policy.
This would, this would be all employees, not just teachers. All right, Mr. Settles?
I hate to nitpick, but I'm going to go to line number 11. And again, for ease of reading, I don't know if expect, is it, where did we get this? Is this, does it have to read like this?
TSB is recommending that.
Okay, because it says, "I have no, no expectancy." And I think expectation would, would read a little bit better. "I have no expectation of continued employment."
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to approve as amended interim policies, 5.7.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you. Next board policy for first reading is substitute teachers. Board policy 5.701. And this talks about if we have a teacher who misses a day, several days, that we have a pool of substitute teachers that we can choose, or that teacher can have a preferred list. And one of those substitute teachers can fill in for that substitute teacher that day. We handle our substitute teachers ourselves. Here, it talks about a third party. We could delete that part because we handle them ourselves. We like that. We could probably eliminate lines four and five and part of two and three. Substitute teacher may be employed and paid directly by the board, period, if we wanted to. Till we choose. We like to handle them ourselves, if you're okay with that. Of course-
I have a question on that.
Mr. Settles?
The only question I have on that is, is the fact that we handle it ourselves, we do that now. If anything can change in the future, and I'm sure we have a reason why we do, but is there any chance in the future that it may be handled by a third party and maybe safe just to leave it in there?
We could leave it in there.
Is that, that's my only question, because I, and I don't know that that would be the case. I think what, what we're doing works. I just don't know, you know, for future reference, and maybe-
And we could leave it in there, yes.
Y'all bring me along, educate me, tell me if I'm getting it wrong.
I don't see anything wrong with leaving it there. It doesn't hurt anything. Mr. King?
The, the one reason to leave it in would be for your defense, if you will. Because if a third-party agency comes to you and says, "Why don't you use us? I could save you money." That may be true, but we're holding our substitutes to a high standard. And here are the standards we hold them to. And they might not be able to meet that standard for you. You know, so that would give you, you know, hey, if you want our business, we, we require this, this, and this. You know, that-
Personally, I don't know how they could save us money.
Yeah.
Because we're paying ourselves this much money. How are you going to do that?
But I, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there are systems that use a third party.
Right.
But though, but the applicants still have to maintain the same certification and qualifications as what we would, we would require with, with, if we were doing it ourselves. Ms. Smith, then Mr. Barrett?
Explain to me about the dates and under the compensation. Why are those dates or? This only applies to teachers who retired after July 1, 2011, and July 1, 2016?
Some school systems pay more for certified teachers. We don't. If you've got a college degree, you get X number of dollars a day. If, what this is saying is, if you are a retired school teacher, but your license has expired, you shall be paid the same as a retired substitute teacher with an active teaching license. Does that make sense?
It does, but what, what's the deal about July 1 through 2011 through July 1?
That was just when the law took effect.
So, should we delete that whole section if we don't pay any differently?
Well, yes, we could.
It's not, it's irrelevant.
It, it doesn't apply to us.
Okay, so let's delete lines 18, 19, and 20.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Barrett?
Lines 43 through 45, and you might have already addressed this one, but do we do this now, the review of the substitutes with input from principals?
We don't do it on an annual basis. We do it on a daily basis.
Hey, I figured you'd do, yeah.
If a principal has concerns about a substitute teacher, they do not hesitate to notify us.
I used to substitute teach, so yeah, I know, I did, trust me, yeah. If you're not doing a good job, they're not going to call you back.
We could say on at least an annual basis.
All right, we have a motion to approve policy 5.701, substitute teachers?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you. Next po- policy for first reading is student teachers, 5.702. We have an excellent relationship with Middle Tennessee State University, and they assign many of their student teachers to our schools, which will allow, which allows us to go observe them and choose the best of the best to be our teachers for the following school year. And this basically is the protocol that we follow. We recommend approval for first reading.
Move to approve.
No, I-
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Settles. Now, Mr. Barrett, do you have a question?
Yeah, well, it's more pointing out something from our old policy versus the new policy. So, in the old policy, it said, well, and I'm going to just read it, those lines eight through 12. "While no staff member of the Mercer City Schools will be required to supervise student teachers, it is expected that teachers will volunteer to do so from time to time. Teachers new to the system and those having three or less years of teaching experience normally will not be asked to undertake such responsibilities." It kind of lays that out. I didn't know that might be more getting in the weeds of, you know, who we assign, everything. I just noticed that, and I just didn't know if we wanted to bring that up for a discussion, or leave it on the table, or leave it on the chopping block, but-
That is also part of the prerequisite from the university. The number of years' experience.
Okay.
I think that, this is my opinion, so you can jump in here, or anybody else can. I'd almost rather leave that out of this and put it in an AD or someplace, because I don't know how some of that may change in the future, or, or what we might want, want to change with that. I think that the way we operate is basically those, those teachers that will accept a student teacher, but I don't know that we've ever forced anybody to take a student teacher. And I think a lot of times that, that three years is important. And right now, that's the way we operate. I don't know whether that would, would change in the future, though. But I, I'd like to see that, if we want to include that. I'd rather see that in an AD that would be easy enough to change.
That's fine.
And there have been a time when Middle Tennessee has asked us, look, we need this, another placement. And we've had someone with maybe a couple of years' experience, but we know that they're a good teacher. So, and that, that student teacher would benefit from having that teacher as a mentor.
All right. All right, have a motion to approve policy on student teachers.
They already did.
It's already on the floor.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. We get the odd, the debates, or discussion, I forget.
Okay, the next policy is 5.801, recruitment and selection of the director.
Ms. Marinestaff, we had a request from a board member to add an E onto this, and I don't know when, whether now's the time to bring that up or later, but I certainly have no problem with adding it. And it would say that a board member must recuse himself from voting if an immediate family member is, a member, is an applicant. Good thing that you all are presenting this tonight. Is an applicant for director of schools?
Mr. Barrett?
One thing I wanted to maybe see added in here, since they seem to love to throw it down on us, that they would keep abreast of legislative issues and inform the board of any concerns that may impact the district. And our director currently does a good job of that, but I would like anybody coming in to have that on the front burner, and let us know if there's any concerns.
Okay. And you may want to include that, Mr. Barrett, in the next policy in 5.802, which has to do with the qualifications and duties of the director.
I think that's where, oh, I might have jumped ahead.
All right, so we have an addition, letter E, under number four, is that right?
Right. A board member must recuse himself- Right. A board member must recuse himself from voting if an immediate family member is an applicant for director of schools.
Okay.
All right, do we have, I'm sorry, Mr. Barrett?
I jumped, this wonderful E meeting, I jumped ahead, and that was from, we'll save it for the next one. I had a question about this one. In our old policy, it defined a vacancy. I don't think we need to define that here, but I just wanted to throw, it was just a difference I saw, and I wanted to bring it up, and, you know, like I said, again, chopping block is always fine with me, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but-
If vacancy occurs, we're gonna know it, aren't we?
I just thought it was interesting they had to spell out the vacancy, which is like, okay.
People know the lease by the start of the school year.
All right, do we have a motion to approve 5.801, director of schools recruitment and selection?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
I'll second.
Settles, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you. Next board policy in the file section is qualifications, duties of director of schools, 5.802. And it's basically got a job description here.
There was also a suggestion to this one, and I know that Mr. Barrett has a suggestion too, but under financial management, and a five to be added, develops and maintains strong communications with the city manager and mayor regarding the financial needs of Murfreesboro City Schools. And I think that's, having lived that, I think that's pretty important. So it would be a five, added to financial management, develops and maintains strong communications with city manager and mayor regarding the financial needs of Murfreesboro City Schools. And then, Mr. Barrett, I think you-
Yeah, it was the legis, being abreast of legislative issues and informing the board of any concern. I think we could put that under community, was it, community, public relations, maybe number seven.
All right, do we have a motion to approve as amended? Mr. King, do you have a question?
Under line 48, personnel administration, it doesn't really spell out the hiring of folks, but, or is that implied in any of these numbered bullet points here? Like line 51, employ such personnel as may be necessary. I mean, is that-
That's how I read it.
I mean, is that, is all that covered into here? Just notice it evaluates, communicates, holds meetings, signs and transfers, but I didn't see the word, you know, employees, or hires, or staffs.
I think number two, there are lines 51, 52, it talks about basically hiring, employ such personnel as may be necessary within the limits of budgetary provisions.
Yeah, and that's where I fit it in. I just want to make sure that that's where it was, or-
I would think so. Any other questions? We have a motion to approve 5.802, qualifications and duties of director of schools.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any other questions?
Is that with the changes that were-
Yes.
Oh, yeah, with the-
Thank you.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay, the next and the last board policy for me to address with you tonight is 5.803, directors evaluation. And this just details how you will evaluate the director of schools. We recommend approval on first reading.
Have a motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Ballard.
I have a question.
Have a second?
A second.
Mr. Barrett, now, Mr. Ballard, have a question?
I have a question, back to me.
It's kind of like the auction, you know, when you raise your hand.
Yeah, yeah.
The aye is good.
On line number five, the board will develop with the director's set of performance objectives based on the needs of the system. Where do we decide what the measurements or the metrics of that are? And where are those written, what the goals are, for like this year, 17, fiscal year 17?
I think, I think what would make sense is, I think that you all are about probably in the next month or so, as soon as the scores come back, you'll be basing it, and I'm assuming it will be based on the evaluation we had previously. And the reason that, in my particular evaluation, which is not necessarily true of others, part of the link to my evaluation is those scores, and so we're hoping like by the end of October, so basically, what I will do is send you the evaluation instrument that TSBA developed and see if you want to change that. I would like for this coming year, for the year we're in now, the 17, 18 year, for us to take a look at that, because instead of doing it at the end, I'd rather have on the front end, I'm assuming my evaluation from last year will be very similar, but it makes sense to me to have you all look at that, perhaps as soon as you finish this past year's evaluation for this year's, to really, and TSBA last year or the year before has come out with kind of a standard evaluation, but you all may or may not choose to do that.
Well, are we saying then, and I appreciate that comment, that let's say, do we have an objective set for budget? Objective set for safety? And we say, okay, here are your five key performance objectives, and, you know, at the end of the year, we evaluate what those are. Maybe I'm a little embarrassed to sit here and say, I don't know exactly what those are.
What I'll be doing, and I can do that within the next couple of weeks at least, because I really need to, is send you a copy of the evaluation that has been used for the last couple of years and let you take a look at that, and then you all decide whether you want to tweak that. But really, that evaluation, and it seems a little backward to me, but it's the way it's been done in the past, is would be for last year. So then, what I'd like is for you all to go to set objectives this year, as soon as we finish that evaluation, so that, so that it's on the front end rather than on the back end.
Okay, okay, well, I think if we're working toward the same measurables and understanding, then we can know that at the end, at the time of evaluation, I want to be able to look at something and say, well, did we or did we not, you know? So, I appreciate that.
Mr. King?
Do we need to spell out a timeline, for lack of a better word? I noticed there's no date at all, you know, no month, no quarter, no time of year. You know, that this shall be done in the fall. Something like, do we, do we need to spell that out just-
I think, I think it would be good for this, for this, the current year that we're in to do that. And it really is going to depend on what you have. For example, right now, part of my evaluation is tied to test scores. Well, we, there was a time, three or four years ago, when we might have gotten those test scores in June. You know, one, last year, I guess it was, the test scores became, not the test scores, but became the measure what, by which principals and, well, really, teachers were evaluated. So this year, it's going to be, we hope by the end of October, that you'll get those in. I think right now, it would be hard, if you're going to have that tied to test scores, to say, this is when we're going to do it. So the assumption has been that when those scores are in, because it is. Now, if you don't have it tied to test scores, then I think you could, would be freer to set up a date.
All right, do we have a motion to approve evaluation of director of schools?
Didn't wear any.
So moved.
Yeah, second.
Mr. Settles, thank you, Mr. Barrett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? I think we already had that motion.
Probably, I don't remember.
Yeah, because Wes did, because I thought he was bidding on something.
I thought, yeah.
I don't remember.
I was one of those, I held my hand up, and I stepped to the front of the room, volunteered.
All right, 6.2, attendance?
Okay, your next board policy, what you have in red on this particular policy that I had given you was from TSBA. It primarily addresses the military service of the parents or guardian, as that being an excuse to absent. Also, it deals with tardies. And what, there was a little more detail in the policy that you currently have, and TSBA recommended that a lot of that be put into STU 33. So basically, what I've given you is the AD that would go along with this policy, so you could see it, to see how it does spell out more specifically than what you have in 6.200. 6.200 would rescind STU 9, 57, and 60. And if I need any help, I'm going to call on Joe Marlin and the principals for this one, so just be ready, folks.
Mr. Settles?
I have two questions. The first one is in line one. I'm not familiar with this, so I just need help on it. Murfreesboro City School Boards shall establish school attendance zones.
Right. Those are, that's your zoning that you do, so we're going to say, this school, that's right.
Got you.
And that was not, that was not anywhere, any, anywhere, well, I don't think it was in any of our policies, but TSBA recommended that, and it certainly makes sense.
STU 60.
Was it?
Yeah, it was just that one line. It was just that.
Okay, good, thank you.
The second question I had, and this is just over me, next year I won't have these same questions, I don't think.
You will.
Where do we get this definition for truancy? Because it says that one day of absence is considered a truancy. I know, I guess because truancy has such a negative connotation in my mind, I keep thinking about the truant officer that went after those kids on The Little Rascals.
Yeah, I hear you. That's, that's the way that, that truancy-
Is that a-
That's it.
Is it a state board definition? Is it TSBA, or we're just, is that Webster's?
I'm thinking, well, and I would, let me see. We, I can check on that.
Yeah.
And get back with you on that.
I guess because it sounds so, uh, bad, for lack of a better word.
It does, but it, but in reality, that's what truancy is, is an absence from a, yeah, I would love to have another, like, absence, or-
Yeah. He was truant today because he didn't show up.
Mr. King?
I don't know if there's another policy that goes to the next part, we're sticking on truancy again, starting in line 36, students who are absent five days. And if you keep reading, it goes through, there's a process. We've got a student who's missed five days, and you go through that. And then, line 41, principal designated, shall then develop an attendance plan and coordinate services. All right, then we go to line 43, upon notification that a student has been absent 10 days, and then we go through those motions. My question was, or is, what happens if there is no improvement by the student from their parents or their guardians, that you're just, you know, it's not the kid's fault, let's say, that there's no, we've done stuff at five days, we've taken action at 10 days, and it doesn't seem to get better? Is that spelled out on another policy about what we, our rights are, if you will?
It's actually in state law.
Okay.
It's, Tennessee is a compulsory attendance state.
Okay.
And the parents can get charged with a criminal offense for failing to send their children to school. So once they have hit that 10-day mark, they can be filed, a truancy petition can be filed against the parents. That's who we file on, because we have elementary-age children. Of course, when children reach the age of middle school and high school, the, those schools will file directly on the child, rather than just the parent. So, but we file on the parent, and it is a criminal offense that is punishable by, they can be fined $50 a day for every single day the child has been absent from school.
So there is recourse, so to speak, after the 10th day. We're doing our job. We've alerted the parents and the custodians and the guardians, and-
Yes, they-
Then we turn it over, so to speak.
The schools go to great lengths to notify the parents in writing. The social workers reach out to the parents, try to set up meetings with them, and communicate with them, and provide them any assistance, help, alarm clocks, whatever they need to try to help them get their child to school.
Okay, good.
We are more interested in the children being in school than we are punishing the parents. And I understand that there may have to come a time when we have to do that, but, but it's much more efficient for us if we can work with the parents to try to get the children in school. And the other part is that when you look at, and we have a great court system here, but it just takes time. So the time that you're going through that process, that child may still be out of school. And that, you'll, we will actually come back to you with this policy again next year, because there is a state law that will take effect, where we will be working on three different levels and have to spell out those three formal levels before we actually move forward. So we'll be, you know, Joe will be doing a lot of work this spring, and we will, on what does that look like with the principals?
Okay.
But it is, children need to be in school. They need to be in school to learn, and to school, a lot of times, is a very safe place for children to be. So we're going to do whatever it takes to get them there, if we can at all.
Do we have a motion to approve the policy on attendance, 6.2?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay. Your last policy is 6.201. It's the compulsory attendance ages, between six and 17.
Mr. Barrett?
Is there any difference between this one and our old policy, like a major difference, or is it pretty much the same?
I don't think so, Mr. Barrett.
This is all pretty much state law.
It is.
I figured as much, but I didn't know if there's any major.
Does it matter what grade they're in at 17? I'm just remembering the days when you'd look at a third grader that was 14 years old or 15 years old.
That's right.
You're not talking about yourself, though, are you?
No, no, no. Absolutely not.
All right, do we have a motion to approve policy 6.201, compulsory attendance ages?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right, thank you very much. Well done. A lot of work done on policy before we got here, I can tell that. All right, reports and information.
Your first reports and information, you had requested to have a discussion about the letter that was sent by the board to the commissioner, and also the commissioner's response, so I will leave that to you, Mr. Campbell.
Oh, thank you. All right, we sent a letter to the commissioner. We, I'm assuming everyone got a copy of the response from the commissioner?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I will open the floor up for any discussion, or any comments, any thoughts that you might have pertaining to the response we received from the commissioner.
I guess I'll start.
All right.
My original impression was, well, first of all, we did the very appropriate thing by sending the resolution, the letter. I thought that it was very well-crafted in her response, but at the end of it, you know, I'm still, I think we have to keep following up. I don't think there was any closure in this, that by such and such a date, we're going to have you results. So if there's some way to keep chipping away at that to say, well, does that mean we're going to have the results by October 30th? Or does it mean we're going to have the next year's results by May 30th? Something that is, you know, got some teeth in it, as far, as far as what a commitment would be. So I guess I'm looking for a commitment.
Mr. Barrett?
I felt like there was a lot of words for not really answering our questions, but
Agreed.
Unfortunately, and I applaud Ms. Smith for spearheading this, by the way, she, you know, I'm glad we did it, and we got her on record, but I just, when I read the letter, I was like, can you just tell us yes or no? Rather than burying it with a lot of educational jargon, and there's some excuses in here, too. It's online, we're getting it ready to move. It just felt like she really was just dodging the question, unfortunately, and, you know, just begs the question that we really need to go back to our legislator, legislators, and ask them, you really need to fix this for us. They're not doing it. You need to do it for us, and we need to really press that in this next legislative session, in my opinion.
Mr. King?
I agree. My first thought when I read the response letter was, there's something in here doesn't add up. It doesn't add up. And I made all kinds of notes. In the letter, she wrote, "The test is important enough to gauge student development, but yet the results don't come until the next school year." And, and how can you gauge true development if we've moved on? I mean, how can you truly judge progress? She wrote, "Over the past two years, results have been on a longer timeline due to the extended scoring process that was led by Tennessee educators." And I thought, well, who are Tennessee educators? I thought the delay last year was due to the vendor and their lack of preparation. "I thought the delay last year was due to the vendor and their lack of preparation. Am I right? That this was supposed to be online, the system crashed, and they had to go into an emergency mode of having the test printed and shipped to all the schools throughout the state? And if you recall, all of our boxes of tests were labeled to each individual school, yet they got sent to the central office, who we then had to go in and divide the boxes up, divide them by classes and the students, which cost us days. Remember that? I don't sense the vendor at the time working with the state. So much so that they fired the vendor. But there's, I don't remember who the new vendor is now. But as I read this, we're still doing this on paper for this year, correct? It's next year that we go online. I just, my fear is, they haven't solved the problem of getting the paper test in our hands in a timely manner. And then when they're graded, pardon me, completed, and they're submitted for grading, they're still not going to get those graded in a timely manner. I mean,
It's grades fifth through twelve.
I thought it was three through eight.
Five through twelve.
Three through eight.
That's fine.
In the letter, she mentions three through eight.
National High School.
You're right.
Grades three through eight.
Over the past two years, adults have been, last year was
Next, next year, the five through twelve will be online.
Eighteen, nineteen, grades five, twelve will be online.
The difficulty.
Grades five through twelve.
Right.
But that's next year. I'm talking about this year.
Well, the difficulty with that, and I believe that this was stated at TSBA when we were in Shelbyville, that Nikia Downs, who is, kind of oversees it. You are going to still have, even if everybody moves online, which will move faster getting in the back, but you still will have some questions that are going to be an extended response questions that will have to be hand scored. And my understanding is the quickest that you would get those back would be four to six weeks. So, if we test in May, it's still going to be after the timeline, really, that we need. And I was going to ask Mr. Ringstaff. Mr. Anderson, do you know, um, what is the timeline that we have to, if we wanted to make personnel decisions, for example, that we would have to, what's the, is it five days after, or is it June fifteenth? I can't remember. Anyway, it, it's still going to, if you, if you are pushing test scores not getting back until the end of June, or even the middle of June, it's still, it's going to impede decisions that need to be made, including professional development.
Am I, am I correct in remembering that part of a teacher's evaluation is test scores?
There's, there's a thing called level of effectiveness. It's called LOE. So, you're going to have, and, get to the microphone, Mr., uh, Mr. Joe, please. But you are going to have, part, part of that is test scores, yes. And it, and it varies depending on, well, it varies, but part of it's going to be test scores. So, for example, our teachers, they have their LOEs now, right?
Uh, almost all do. We still have some of that. No, because, uh, as test scores have to be entered, and so the, not, that whole process is not completed. But so, that percentage, a percentage of their score, of their evaluation, uh, depends on test, uh, scores. And then part of it is also the observation process. That percentage changes, and I'll pull numbers out of the hat because, uh, since we didn't have test scores last year, um, some teachers will be, they're, they're, it's averaged out differently. So, the percentages are different, and they will be different for the next two or, two to three years. Uh, but anyway, it does, it is dependent upon getting those test scores back in a timely manner, and so.
So, basically, when the year ended, you're, you're talking about a teacher's level of effectiveness being based just on what the observations have been.
And, uh, and last year, and, well, there are other score factors, depending what the, what the teacher chose, because teachers have some choice in that. And if they chose an off-the-shelf, uh, uh, assessment that we used, and, and some do, but we use, uh, tests, you've heard us talk about AIMS Web and, and those types of tests. And some teachers have selected with their principal's approval to use those assessments. And we have those readily available, because those are assessments that we give ourselves and score ourselves.
But that's, that's going to be only, you're right, the teachers who are tested, that's going to be part of their evaluation. That's going to be part of their level of what they call LOE, which is their final score, which, which combines.
And was that not set by the state and Department of Ed? It wasn't set, I mean, we didn't determine that for individual teachers, did we?
The percentages are set by the state as far as how much is going to be testing, how much is going to be observation, how much is going to be another measurement that they, that the teacher chooses.
Achievement measures and growth measures. So, we'd see how many students of their students, the teacher's students, were actually proficient. And that would be an achievement measure. And then we have growth measure, which is a measure that says, student was here, and they, through that teacher's year of instruction, moved to this level. So, that would be growth. And so, we have achievement, growth, and then the other part of that is their actual observation.
However, in our letter to her, we talked about that, and her response to us was that surely we could do something different, but it's mandated by the state, so how can you do something different? We tried to do something different a year ago, remember? By not giving the second half of the test before they disbanded them. And you remember what we got back? Okay. But it's state law, and you'll lose funding? So, they've got you. I was glad to see Representative Brian Terry come out so strong in support of our letter and what we had sent to the commission, as well as, I know others, I've talked to Senator Tracy and Ketron, and have gotten the same response, but this is not the first year we fought this.
One of the things, if you, if you'll remember, board, that, that I've talked about in the past, is that we have multiple measures, that this test not be the only thing by which we measure students and/or our educators. And so, that's, those are things that we're putting in place. We have assessments, and we all have trouble because we don't like to have to give all these tests, but we have to have measures. And we can't depend upon only the state's measure because we don't get those results back. So, we are putting those into place, and, and we use our iReady program, and we use our AIMS Web data to help us have those, uh, measures along the way. Because if we wait till the end of the year, then it's all done, and we can't go back and make any changes.
Ms. Smith, and then Mr. King.
Um, several comments, but one ties along with the measures. So, we do have the academic implications that we've been talking about. And I, for one, want to know how my kid did on the test. I'm not the only one of all the parents that wants to know this. And I want to know, you know, you can have a teacher that is a brilliant talker, and in the evaluation can just do a beautiful job, but the day in, day out really shows up supposedly on the TN Ready tests. So, I know that we have academic implications that are involved with that, because we don't know if the teachers are as good as they talk, if, you know, as, since they can talk the talk. Um, the, it sounds like to me we have financial implications. Because if we're paying for these measures that we're having to kick in
Right.
because we're not getting this test, I think that I'd like to see the numbers on that.
As far as those costs?
Those costs. I'd like, I'd like to see that, that, because we are, again, having to cough up money. First, we go years ago, got all this money from the city in order to get the laptops. And then it all crashes, and now we have to get money to have the new measures, make sure that we're going to have the measures that we wouldn't want to have because we're testing too much.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that, that's a great point for me to clarify for you. Those measures that we're using, we're already in place. Those were not things that we had to add in order to get this. They, like AIMS Web, we have to use in order to, uh, determine which students need intervention. You've heard, uh, you've heard us talk about response to intervention. So, that, so we're able to use that. And what we're doing now is making sure we collect that data so we can use it to measure where the students are and where, and how our teachers are doing. So, uh, your question is great, and I appreciate it, but I want you to understand that we didn't have to implement anything special or, or spend any extra money to do that. What we're doing is making sure that everyone's using those measures so that we can, we have data to compare. For example, iReady is a mathematics test that we use. We purchased that several years ago as a part of our, um, adoption for our mathematics text. And so, it has a component that we, in the past, have said, here it is, here's, here's something that you use. It's a great resource, but what we've discovered over time is that resource can help us by providing those measures, if everyone will use those. And so, what we implemented this past school year was to say to all schools, this is an expectation. We expect every child to have this test so that, which we'd already paid for, so that we can compare across the board, and, and school by school, and class by class, and student by student. So, it didn't cost us any extra money to implement these measures that I'm talking about. But what it does for us, it does, gives us those signposts along the way to tell us where we are.
Excellent. So, another thing is that we always have the policy about including the scores and the kids' grades. And the each, for the last two or three years, I think it's the last two years.
Well, since the law was created, really, we've never been able to do it.
Really?
Right.
Yeah, right.
Which has been at least two or three years.
It's always waived it.
We've had to waive it. And, and I, I, if you recall, I, in my, the first time that it came up before me, I was opposed to our waiving that going into the school, the kids' grades, because the expectation had been put out for the kids at the beginning of the school year. And again, it's, it's still there. We're still going to have to do it.
It's, it's still there, but we still, the way that, but the issue is that we don't get the test back in time to follow through with whatever the policy would say.
This is going to count in your grades, and it's, it's not going to.
That's right.
Okay. That's my.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. King.
All right. I'll, I'll, I hope I get my point across, and tell me if I'm not. Last year, we threatened not to do TN Ready, and we got told, don't you dare. You'll take that test, or, or you won't get no money. All right? We take TN Ready, but we don't give it the weight. So, when it comes to a teacher evaluation, as I understand you, we have three things. One of the three is TN Ready. What if, on the teacher evaluation, or whatever you want to call it, the TN Ready portion has a weight of zero? And we can choose or add other items that we measure the teacher on. Because in, in this letter, and I'm quoting, "In reference to personnel decisions," unquote, and I'm going to cut out a bunch of words, quote, "Those are decisions that are made locally and are not required to be based on TN Ready results," unquote. So, if, by state law, we have to do TN Ready. We, we do it. We take the test, we go through those motions, if you will. But we don't need the results because we will decide what we want to measure our teachers on. Does that, does, does my point here make any sense whatsoever? And that, yes, TN Ready, there'll be a spot for it, but the weight will be zero. And we pick and choose what we feel is important. The, the observation, of the other assessments that we've already bought and paid for, things like that. Yes, we take TN Ready. Yes, we go through the muscles, but we don't need, we don't need the scores, because she told us we don't need them. And, and am I the only one that kind of finds that out oxymorally?
I was going to, I was going to say, that's exactly how I read it.
You must take this test, but you don't need the scores.
It was a little interesting, because it sounds like, you know, to be
So, we'll take her at her word, and, and we'll find a way to evaluate our teachers without the scores, but yet we'll take the test.
And part of what we do currently does, we don't have to use TN Ready scores for some of that, for part of that. So, that's, we, we actually already do that to some degree.
Here's, here's where the scores become important. And I think what she's saying is that you do not have to make hiring decisions or renewal decisions based on test scores. I got that. But here's where they do become important. As, as Ms. Smith was saying, you may have a situation where there's someone, and I'll use your term, is really talks the talk, but until, but, and you may have a principal who's wavering on whether to rehire that teacher or not to rehire that teacher, because they may look like that they are presenting a great lesson. Their observation scores may be, may be high. But if those test scores come in, and that, and that teacher has killed the rest of that grade level, then that principal has a real problem, because, Mr. Ringstaff, by what, what date do they have to notify whether they're going to renew or non-renew?
Five days after the last instructional day.
So, five days after the last instructional day. Well, we don't have test scores back then. So, I have had principals who we've had those kinds of conversations, where I think, Linda, I think this teacher is, is going to do really well on the test scores. And then the next fall, that, that principal's saying, I wish I had not had. Or, we have a teacher who could do really well, but we don't find out until October that that teacher needs the help and support that they need to become a good teacher. So, that teacher's already lost. We've lost August, we've lost September, and we've lost October, plus we've lost any kind of training that we would do in the summer to help that teacher. That's where the crux, yes. Can we make renewal decisions without those test scores? Yes, we can. But should they play a role? Probably. Now, what we don't have a choice of is on that, that number that is allocated to that teacher as far as that level of effectiveness, it is specified what percentage of that is going to be observation, what percentage of that's going to be test scores, what percentage of that's going to be growth. So, is she right in, in that we can make employment decisions without those scores? Yes, but there are certainly situations where we wish we had those scores. And certainly, there are situations where we could be helping that teacher for three months when we don't, may not be able to identify that there's a specific point that that teacher needs help with, like those scores will indicate. And for the school district, while I'm preaching, and for the school district, it, it is extremely difficult. And you all said this in the letter, but it is extremely difficult for us to do any substantial professional development training on a massive basis after school starts, because it's equally important for that teacher to be in that classroom. So, for us, if a teacher's, if they know in May, and, and when we do, a lot of our training is in May, if we have to pull teachers, or if there's something, we absolutely want those teachers to have so that they can plan over the summer, because teachers don't walk in their classroom on July thirty-first and say, oh, I think I'll do my planning now for when the students arrive five days later. But it's critical for us, and this is something we have shared, superintendents have shared with states. If we can get those test scores out early enough, then we can plan in May, and we can plan in June and July and August for what we really need to target. But in October, or the end of October, it's almost impossible, because you've lost a whole lot of the year. So, really, to enact change, it's extremely difficult to enact change when you get those scores in October, because then you're looking at five months before you're tested again. Now, let's not count in the holidays and all the things that can happen in between that time. So, realistically, any, any major, major, major change for it to be really effective is going to almost have to come in that next year. And that's what's extremely frustrating to principals, and to directors of schools, and anyone else associated with schools.
I think another avenue, not only to teachers and principals, but I think when we don't get test scores back until that late a date, it's also a major, uh, what I want to say, infringement or something on students. Because you take a student that may be borderline somewhere, and you may want to look at test scores to see whether or not they may, may qualify to be gifted, or maybe they're need to be in a special class. And you don't have things like the test scores back. It, it causes a little bit of a problem, and that's endangering the student's learning for a long period of time, particularly if we make a major mistake in placement.
One of the things that we do not have yet are what are called quintiles, that show us where our students who scored extremely high and our students that scored. It's really important for us to target those students. If we know that our students who could be our high achievers are not scoring as high, then we're going to, we're going to do some strategic
Right.
uh, strategies that are going to impact those. So, you're looking at Howard or Questioning, you're looking at Challenging, you're looking at Problem-Based Learning. On the other hand, if we know that this group down here doesn't have some of the basic skills, and that looks very, very different than, than the way we would treat our children up here. And we're really, that's what we're really anxious to see right now, is, is where do we need to be, where do we need to be targeting? And you're right, the individual students will show up in those quintiles, and so we can help those individual students.
Ms. Smith?
So, when, have you got any feedback lately? Because I, it's clearly we're getting some results right now.
We, we are getting, we do not have the individual student results yet, do we?
You don't have those?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and the other thing is, it's probably already going in there, but I would like to see the, uh, letter of response to go in the minutes as well, and our letters go back in the minutes for this meeting, to have a side-by-side.
Okay. And while we are discussing that, with part of our And while we are discussing that, with part of our frustrations, a lot of our frustrations.
I apologize.
I think we need to be thinking very seriously about a date that we can have our meeting with our legislative body. I would like, if you would, please, to look at your calendar sometime in the next week, perhaps, and give me some suggestions on early dates, perhaps early part of December. I have talked with the, the chairman of the county board, and that's kind of what we're, what we're looking at. And I've talked to a couple of legislators already, and they have said, yeah, that's would be good for them, too. So maybe the first week of December, somewhere along that line, just send me an email and tell me a priority date you might have, or a date that you cannot. And it is our time to host, but I think this board is, we have been pretty well adamant that we want to have that meeting again, and I think it's very good. That way, we can get our invitations out early enough so that maybe we can get all of our legislators there at one time together.
Good. It'd be good.
All right. Personnel report.
If you have any question about the personnel report, I'll be happy to answer it, or if you want to give me a call later, be fine, or call Mr. Ringstaff.
All right. My computer just spinned.
Your, your last one is your enrollment, your PTR.
Enrollment.
All right, the enrollment report. This is the report that ended yesterday, which was the end of the second period. The state identifies our growth patterns based on the second period, third period, sixth and seventh, and they do a blended average to come up with. So this is really the first one that counts towards the amount of students we get credit for, for this whole school year. Overall, our attendance percentage went up to 96% this month, so we went up 1%. It was good to see. Our pupil teacher ratio for K3 is 19.24 to 1, and for 4-6, 21.04, for an average district-wide of 19.93. We have grown from the end of last year, 231 students, which is, equates to about 2.6% increase over the finish of last school year. Want to draw your attention again to the west side of town. Overall Creek, if you go over to the column all the way to the right, the last, the last column, the top number for overall Creek, 1,017, that's how many students they have in their doors today.
Wow, jeez.
Wow.
Scales, 1,032 students. Casey Lane, 850. Remember, if we have a special ed class in there that basically reduces one classroom the capacity of about 10 students, so if they have five special ed classrooms because of our ratios in special ed, that means it's 50 below the design capacity of the school, which is what we anticipate. There's no issue with that, just wanted to let you know that if you think, you know, a school holds 1,000 kids, it can actually hold some more, some additional students based on a 20-to-1 ratio, and if we go up over that for 4 through 6, we can actually increase the ratio. But we're hanging really tight at 20, 20 district-wide on every, every grade level. So if anyone had any questions for me on that, our total right now is 8,828 students.
Gary, remind me again, what, the far-right column, the, the blue number?
Okay, the far-right column, the top number in that beige color is the actual number of students in the, in the building. The number underneath it was the number that we had projected for that school building.
That's your projection.
From last spring. So some are over, some are under.
All right, thanks.
Any questions? Any other items under, other business coming forward to the board? Mr. King?
No, I just had one.
I'm sorry?
You addressed the one about the joint meeting. You know, we've also done those tours with the city council members in the past, too, and considering we just saw this growth on here, it'd be good to maybe tour that west side of town to show our city council members, our city manager, exactly all that growth and the need for the new school. And I know we also need a new bus garage and things, so I always feel those are useful, you know, when I attend, and it, it's always good to sit down with our city council members, so maybe we want to get that scheduled as well, so.
We'll have Mr. Ray, and we'll, we'll talk about that tomorrow.
Okay, good. I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. King?
Am I right, next Tuesday is the last town hall?
That's right. Thank you for reminding me. That will be, right, that's right, and that's it.
Where will it be?
Hobgood. And it includes Discovery, let's see if I can remember it. Discovery, Bradley, Hobgood, there's one more. Black Fox, probably, it's going to be on that side. 6:30. And also, if there are, if there are parents who did not, if they were not able to attend the other ones, if they would like to come, we'll get that information out, too.
Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend, but at least wanted to bring that up. Also, we're about, just under a month away from TSBA convention. And if you remember, the delegate assembly, there were a lot of points brought up about using the ACT people to help do or implement the TN Ready and then grade it, because they, they have proven they have the network, the structure. So I think this is something we ought to, when we go to TSBA convention in about a month, to see if we can talk to other systems and see what's on their minds. But other, under business goes, goes back to the consent items tonight. When we were talking about the board policy 5.200 and 5.201, I noticed, let me go back to my notes real quick. There were, there were two points. I kept, I kept reading where it would spell out, this needs to be done in so, in so many days, so many days. And then a couple instances, it would say working days. The board needs to respond in so many working days. For tenured teachers, it was spelled out 12 times the day something needed to be completed. 10 of those times, it was not specific, it was calendar business days. Yet two of the times did get specific. It was not spelled out in lines 12, 13, 28, 30, 34, 42, 52, 54, 61, and 67. But it was spelled out in lines 40 and 48. And I thought, you know, this many times where it was spelled out twice, but not only these others. And, and again, it's dealing with the suspension of a teacher. And I thought, something this important, do we need to spell out business days versus calendar days in something like, of this nature? When it came to non-tenured teachers, the same applied 13 times. Nine of these instances were not specific, and four were spelled out. So on a non-teached thing, we spelled out four times that it needed to be done in so many working days. But a tenured teacher, we bothered to spell it out only twice. And I just wondered, is this a policy that we need to bring back up somewhere in the future and look at that? Do we need to spell out working days, business days, calendar days? To me, it's something that important, probably need to be a little more specific. I also noticed, and I may be the only one, that for the tenured person, if, if it got brought before the board, they had a 15-minute opportunity to speak, them or their attorney. But in the non-tenured person, there was no limit that the non, on the speaking, the, the non-tenured person and their attorney could come to the meeting, and there was no mention of a time cap on them. And I, again, I just wonder if it's okay with everyone if we could bring this policy back up and look at these points and see if, are they valid? Does everybody agree or disagree? And, and like I said, I thought something of this importance, when it's coming with discipline, if you will, that I just wanted to look at it.
Are you, are you in the process of making that a motion, that we bring that policy back up, future reference time?
Is this something I may be able to do?
I, I can research the statute and see it, how it addresses the calendar versus days.
Okay. It just caught me by surprise that as many times as it's mentioned, that it would literally go back and forth. And I kind of thought there would be some consistency, but that the fact that there were, it was spelled out, the board will do this in so many working days, that, that it was not spelled out in others, I just thought, shouldn't it be consistent throughout the whole policy?
And I'll, I know in statutory construction, when they write laws, if they don't specify, it's, you defer to calendar days. If typically they'll specify, they mean something other than a calendar day. However, I'll go back and double-check those statutes, those were policies drafted by TSBA. So I'll double-check the statutes and see if they specify whether it's calendar or working days.
Can, can you have that ready by the next time we meet?
Yes.
Two weeks?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for looking into that. Like I said, just two points I noticed.
Mr. Saddle?
My question was, was that, was that policy first reading?
No, this was in the consent agenda. And, and, yes, we went over, but it was just something that I was, as, as I was rating and preparing, I just kind of, I, I'd go back and re-rate it. Now, that's, surely there's a reason, but I, I couldn't answer what is the reason.
Because I would think on suspension, that would, I would presume, but presumption is not due too much, I would just presume that it would be working days because you're dealing with a suspension. But that's my presumption.
We'll look at that at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else coming forward this board? Thank you again for working so hard on policies. I think it shows that we're, everybody is taking an interest, and everybody had some very good questions, and we, everybody had seemingly had done homework that we needed to do. Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
And good night.
Thank you.